Okay, thank you very much. I have 4.0 recognition comments from the chair. I will pass on that tonight. Unless anyone wants to hear this speed, which is not the case. Item 5.0, we have minutes from meeting of August 27th. Do I have a motion to approve the rule? Sorry. Motion by Bill, second by Alan. Comments, changes, amendments?
I just saw a spelling error. It was pine, I think you should see Pine Tree Camp Trip. It says Pine Tree Camp Trip.
You have one page?
Uh, the third page, under the overnight film trip.
Excellent, that correction. Any others? Thank you for that. Can we approve the minutes as amended? If you're in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Um, adjustments to the agenda? Patrick?
Just have one at such a table tonight. We have a nomination for part-time physical education teacher at Dinko.
Make that 11.4?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. Item 7.0, public session. Any comments from the public? This is, uh, can I see comments on things that are on the agenda? Sure.
Yeah.
If you could, well, we don't have that.
Yeah, we're producing like here.
Oh, I've got to be loud.
Well, we just want to make sure that our page. Can you just, uh, just page your name? No, I think I'll switch it back to the last page.
Hi, my name is Deirdre. Hello, I live here in Raph. And for the last 19 months, I have served first on the six-day bill with the committee, and then on the combined committee, which I continue to do. We worked very hard to create a new school for the children of the RASU. And in the last meeting, which was held on August 23rd, the issue of switching from our geothermal plan for, um, geothermal heating cooling system, it was suggested that Raph, we would be there often, switching national gas. National gas. And, um, I'm very opposed to this. There's quite a bit of discussion. People ask why, and they're too into how it's provided to you. But we are the season. I couldn't see every single person who, but I saw only two of the middle of everyone else. I guess. And there are so many disadvantages to natural gas. So even though, um, there might be a $400,000 saving at this time, it would be wiped out over the life of the school. And actually, geothermal would be cheaper than the law. Particularly if we ended up cleaning up solar panels and the location of the school is perfect. Without, all we have to do is raise the money for it, which might take several years. That would hugely break down the cost of running a geothermal system. We can use propane gas for, you know, the needs that are in the school that demand that. And the automatic delivery. And it's not a hassle, if someone called it. It's not a hassle. I'm sure many of you are on that, do a virtual fact. So given the fact that natural gas is a fossil fuel and there's no way to get around that. It doesn't, it's not local. We can't control the price of it. And at times, it is dangerous and very dangerous. The Raphing crisis is very dangerous in the environment. I'm just urging you to think carefully. And I hope that you'll stick with the plan and go with that. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Um, as, uh, Deirdre did come up at the last construction meeting, building committee meeting, but the committee was overwhelmingly supportive. I was standing in the back, so I could see everyone. And the committee was overwhelmingly supportive of continuing, uh, with geothermal. But your diligence and, uh, to make sure that stays part and center is appreciated. Thank you. Okay, item 8.0, committee reports. Patrick, the building project update?
Yeah, the first thing I'll mention is that we have set October 3rd from 2:30 to 4:00 as kind of our gathering barbecue. Uh, then we will serve food and have people come to our office, um, in the apartment lot there. And as people come, it's our way of saying thank you and to show people the work that's been done on the site. So when people come, then we'll, in groups, we'll walk them up onto the site. So you can see what's going on. Uh, and so we're sending out, Vida, I think sent out invitations today to donors, to staff, to people on our committees, to elected officials, uh, students. Trying to think of, or I forgot, Vida. Alumni, um, executive board. So we're sending it out to a large group and we're hoping that people will RSVP and will know approximately how many people will come through. And you can stay for 15 minutes or you can stay for a full hour and a half if you'd like to. And so again, it's our way of saying thank you. And we'll do a much more formal groundbreaking next spring when we, you know, construct the building. The other piece that you have at your desk tonight, at your table, is a very thorough report from Cropper. And now that they're up and running, I think this is, um, a good report for you to get every month. And, um, it's what will be discussed in the trailer tomorrow, uh, at the site meetings that we have. But basically, to boil it down, you see a lot of the word blasting, uh, in these reports as well as just crushing the rock that they are removing from the land up there. They are, they have also were taking some of the fill to the other part of Wing Farm that is having some construction going on. On the, more towards the end of this document, you can see in October, I don't have the date right now, the week, but Two Echo Road will be demolished by the end of October. And also, um, along the theme of just what we just heard is geothermal wells. The field plan is being worked on right now and that will occur pretty soon as well.
Excellent. Are we being compensated for the gravel?
It's part of the bid, right? I mean, they are essentially credit and us for, um, the material that they're removing.
Yeah, I think it's a component of the bid, but I can go back and look at that again to see the amount.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, Patrick, on the building? We did receive reactions, uh, the RP received one comment on blasting. And I think Cropper, I think it's a, uh, a house close to the, close to that part of the site and the location. I don't, I don't think it was the folks that grabbed that, me, but, uh, I think the neighbors and neighbors. But Cropper has been dealing with their, with their consultant. He's actually doing the blasting and hopefully that increases. Answer the question, say, oh, come on, I have, I have.
Um, I would take the notification process and work the next one.
Good.
They've done a very good job there.
Yep, okay. Excellent, thank you. Um, 8.2, Katie, want to, you deferring that to your presentation?
Yeah, I'll just say that's okay with everybody.
Yep. Okay, thank you. 9.0, superintendent's report. 9.1, good news?
Yeah, opening school, I think, went very smoothly. Just to give you a couple of updates, uh, we're doing a close examination of our literacy practices across the district, especially at the pre-K and 5 level. Um, so you'll hear more about that this year. At Morse, um, you know, we brought a small group of students to a leadership conference in August and they're coming back. And it was really focused on student culture and also on student-led initiatives to improve things in general. Also at Morse, we have enough interest, um, based on the conversation we had about goals earlier, but we do have enough interest to resurrect our math team, which is a Schedule B appointment at the high school, but it's already there. Um, it just was, uh, non-existent for a couple of years just because we didn't have the interest. But it's an academic competition that we're very proud. I think we had 18 students sign up and we need at least eight to have a math team. So it looks, um, very promising. As well in the high school, we are offering AP chemistry this year and we also are sending someone to be trained for AP advanced placement physics. And one thing that we've talked about maybe a couple of years out from now is, Mr. Varney and I have talked about is maybe an advanced placement research capstone as well. So we're not ready for it yet, but continually adding some of those AP opportunities. Don't know if you saw the backup from BRCTC, but the Melmac grant that they received and special lending to Julie and to Katie. We're putting that together, but over the next four years, it's, it's $132,000. And part of that is for college and career readiness. And so exposing students earlier to vocational drag, but also exposing them to community college, college, uh, potential jobs that are out there. So that's part of it. The other part is going to be for some summer programming in the area of SCIM, where students can come and they can have a variety of opportunities and possibly earn a half a credit as well as just be exposed to a lot of different opportunities. So exciting piece at vocational school. Uh, cafeterias, uh, we definitely talk a little bit about the food service budget in a minute, but our cafeterias at all of our schools have been recognized as let's go lunch rooms. And just to give you an idea, recognized when they are implementing best practices that reduce waste, increase participation, and make changes that help nudge students to make healthier choices. And so all of our schools have been recognized and that's sponsored by Barbara Bush Children's Hospital. And lastly, I'll just mention in the goal session about the district educational plan for 2018-19. So you're aware of that, but we will get that out to our whole staff and to the community within the next week. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions, Patrick? I think Karen, when you see the email, uh, let's, let's go to, I don't have the notification. That's great, that's great. Um, 9.2, Deborah, information reports?
Okay, so tonight, we're looking at August. So we're, um, into our spending. We've spent $2.4 million so far out of our budget. This is 8.28% compared to last year. Last year was 6.15, but I hadn't brought in the full food service last year at the end of August. So that's a little bit of a difference there. Um, but generally, we are maintaining the same spending patterns from year to year, month to month. Um, at this point, we have pretty much finished all of our hiring. There's one ed tech position that Justin is interviewing for on Wednesday and that should complete that. So we have 18 new bodies and we are within budget from what we had budgeted. We're in that range. Actually, we're to the good a little bit, so that's, that's a good way to start. Revenues, once again, 18.2%. Last year was 19%. So we're following that same pattern. Um, so that's, I feel comfortable that we're in a good place starting out. A couple of things we'll always keep our eyes on is the tuition, uh, main care seed as it comes through. But right now, I think, um, everything looks good. I put on your table copy of the, uh, the financial comparison that Tim wanted to share. Um, and it's just basically, when he went to the state, they told him that if your salaries are within 55% of your revenues, then it's a good, uh, that's a good way to sort of watch the food service program as it's moving along. And as you can see on this sheet, um, in 16, 17, it was 54% and last year it was 51%. Um, so once again, it's the participation. More revenue we bring in, the better off obviously that we are. But this is just another way of looking at, um, a projection. And then he just wanted to point out those few things down below about what he's doing to increase that participation. And then finally, for the most high project, um, I processed that first payment to Cropper. So now we're at about $4 million that we spent on the project. So once again, that's going well.
Any, any questions? I do have just one question on tuition, on the revenues. Is that, is that, what, what did we do last year? How much tuition were we receiving last year? I mean, if you don't know, then maybe I could just.
I don't know the number right now, but what we'll do is we'll look at how many we budgeted and what's actually happening, uh, once all the enrollment numbers are in with Vida. And then I'll give you an update.
Okay, well, we'll do it. Excellent, excellent. Patrick, in the, uh, in the package included, uh, what, okay. Item 9.3 fundraiser request. Uh, this is included just for informational purposes. Okay, that's it. There's no action, uh, does anyone have any questions on fundraiser? This is just to give us the, what, what the activity we're doing. No questions, okay, thank you. Uh, 10.0, old business. Uh, we have a second reading of policy JJIAB. Extracurricular activity participation regulation. This is an action. So do I have a motion to approve the policy? To approve, uh, the motion by the, the oldest second by the chairman? Any discussion? Alan?
Staying up to date, I wonder if we should include vaping and e-cigarettes?
That's a definition, right?
I, I wouldn't want somebody to say this a loop or I didn't know.
Yeah, but I, I.
I'd say where those are new and just as dangerous.
Well, we can, we can, uh, we can certainly check with, uh, with the state, the state ed, council whether or not. This policy is written broadly enough to, to include that kind of activity. I, I don't, I don't, maybe we know how many were, you know? Mercy leads no, and that would be so that's what I'm, I'm, it's defiling.
Who's that? Big Devoxins and Juices.
They're making. They're considered.
Maybe for this.
Yeah. So it's assumed, um, yeah, tobacco's one, make sure it's covered.
Absolutely. So this is the academic, uh, policy. There is a separate policy for tobacco and alcohol. And that is something that we certainly need to look at. So that's a, it's a separate piece to the entire RSCY policy. But you're right, we do get into that, that as well. But this is just specific to academics.
But, but, but under, um, I don't know what these paragraphs.
Yeah, now we did.
Yeah, it talks about tobacco. So I think the question is whether or not in legal definition of tobacco includes that type of rights. I think it does, but we can check. We'll, we'll double check. Just double check. I think the intent is to exclude those or to include them under some definition of tobacco. Or we should just check to make sure that, that, uh, section is broad enough to include those.
Yeah, I can, I can double check in the next day or two and then I'll, I'll let you guys know. Otherwise, if we need to, you know, make a small change to that. But I think Vida is right. I think it would cover us.
That's still a city I could do, like if you're a mayor and have a child that's been in the line of saying, council's saying to be about e-cigarettes.
So we need to be specific. Yeah, well, we'll check the technical.
The other question that we've got for Katie?
How does the board feel about going ahead and approving the project or approving the policy if we need to come back and end the policy because of that definition? We should do it next month. So we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion in the second. So all in favor of adopting the policy? Any opposed? No, thank you. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, under, uh, 11.0, new business. 11.1, Katie?
I'd be helpful, yeah.
Okay, um, the court, Russell, press votes for me. So does everyone feel like they can see it okay? Yeah? I'm just gonna pass out two quick things. Okay, um, so just to, you can go to the first, I think. To remind everyone where we left off at the last meeting, I spoke briefly about the fact that, um, the state had decided that the once-requiered PBL bill was now optional. Um, and we would get to choose from adopting fully their proposed PBL, um, law or we could choose to, um, adopt the old graduation requirements, but then, um, kind of tweak them however we see fit. Um, and so last time I spoke about the top paragraph that's on that first sheet, that's the vision statement, which basically says that, um, all of the work, all the taxpayer money, everything that's changed about PBL, um, in our district, we as an administrative team would like to continue. So none of it is wasted. However, um, there were parts of the law, um, that we weren't as interested in and hadn't made updates on yet. For instance, we hadn't changed our transcript to be a PBL transcript. Um, we hadn't at the high school thought about doing a specialized diploma in detail. We knew it was coming up and we would have to do it, but we hadn't actually changed anything yet because the students haven't aged up to that point. Um, and so moving forward, essentially what this vision lays out is, um, the items we've already been doing that are good for students and they're good for teachers, um, that make for better classroom education, that we want to continue, um, while leaving the parts of PBL that the state was going to require in the past and us choosing to not do those things. Okay, so, um, I just wrote the last, you can read these bullet points on that one. We're reading right off the slide. Um, but the bottom line is, um, that I think is really important for everyone to be clear on, is while, um, Mr. Varney and I would be proposing, as well as the administrative team, to, um, adopt back the old graduation policy, we're in fact not moving backwards on any of the work we've done. Um, really, what we're doing is continuing all of it and just not further working on the pieces that we weren't as invested in in the first place. So what does that actually mean? Um, you have a, you know, a one and a half page sheet that explains everything in detail with a lot of educational jargon. And what I tried to do was on one slide, just pare it all down, um, to five things that I think that this piece of paper means for our district. And so here they are. Um, that our students should be the ones in the classroom who are actually doing, um, the majority of the work. And so, um, I know that when I was in school, there was a lot of, um, talking at me and me listening and taking notes. Um, and that works for some students, but it doesn't work for all students. And so one of the things that PBL has, um, kind of made us think a little bit differently about is, um, what are all the different ways that students can learn? Um, that might be helpful for some learners over others and really choosing, that sometimes lecture is perfect, but other times you should be doing other types of learning in your classroom. And so it's really pushed our teachers and our students, um, towards more variety and we would like to continue that. Um, the second piece is that, um, you used to only get one chance to do things. Um, and the, the whole idea of proficiency-based learning is it might take you longer on some things than others. And so you should, um, be given retakes or multiple opportunities to revise. And so that's something that we already have embedded in our current system that we would like to continue. Um, continued effort, and this is something I know we've talked a lot about in our conversations, um, with the VOCE, about the VOCE Center and about adding different classes at the high school, is the more we can make our classes relevant to 21st century learning and skills and what the workplace really wants and needs students to be doing. That's something that PBL has pushed us towards that we'd like to continue. Um, through all the taxpayer money that we've used, um, to have teachers looking at their curriculum again and then planning new activities, um, that idea is one of the things that's really driven the changing of our work, which I think is important and exciting. So we'd like to continue that. Um, and that grades will no longer be based on whether you turn something in and you just get a completion grade, but it's how well do you actually understand the material? Um, and one of the things that's described in the vision document is that that looks a little different in kindergarten as it does in 8th grade, as it does in the high school. Um, and that that's actually okay to have a system that's not exactly the same for pre-K through 12th graders. And so one of the things that we'd like to do is continue on with, um, the different grading systems that make sense and are developmentally appropriate at each level. Um, and then finally, something I've already said is that, um, you know, our high school transcripts, transcripts and diplomas, um, we don't feel that those need to change. We want to make sure that the transition, um, from, for our students to whatever they're doing next is smooth. And that, um, you know, some people argue that the change of those documents can be a struggle for students to pass on to other organizations who don't necessarily look at PBL documents in the same way or might not understand them. So questions? Steve, you look like you have a question.
I can get this off.
Do you want to?
So I, I, I don't want to disturb the flow of Katie's presentation, but I do want the board to feel that they can ask questions.
Yes. And I actually should have said that, thank you, at the beginning, that ask questions throughout and then we can have more questions at the end.
So for, for example, you, your bullet two.
Yes.
We believe students should be given more than one opportunity. And, and I, I thought I understood, uh, when, when, um, J. Pinkerton made his pitch for, for this, uh, for years ago and, and talked about, and I presume that's what you mean by, um, how do you phrase it here? Retake policy?
That is exactly what I mean.
So how do you, I mean, I understood it in the context of, of getting the student to a point where he, she can demonstrate proficiency, but, you know, numeric grading system?
Sure. Sure.
How do you do this?
I'll spare you all the details, but essentially what it means is if a student does not pass quote unquote the summit of assessment, that they get a chance to do two things. One, they have to show some sort of initiative to relearn the material. So that might be going and studying with a teacher during a guided production. It could be, you know, doing a piece of work that they didn't do before the assessment the first time. So there's some sort of initiative to relearn. And then the second thing is that they actually get to take an assessment again and they get to earn up to a 75% to pass that at the high school level. The retake policy looks different at the middle school and at the elementary level, it's kind of an ongoing process of learning all the time. They do things very differently. And so, does that answer your question?
Well, it does. I, yeah, you've described what it's gonna go, but I just don't know. How do you, how do you do this? You give a test. And we have students who do not perform well on the test.
Correct.
You give them the opportunity to retake the test.
Correct.
This is a change from the current policy?
Mm-hmm.
So this is one of the things.
Yeah, so it used to just be you did it once and that was it and you moved on. So there weren't retakes. And they didn't replace the old grade in some ways, but now they do replace the old grade.
They didn't place it in the total. So if I got 50 on an examination, I retake it, I get 80.
You can get up to a 75 at the high school.
So I can only book a 75?
Correct. Yes, and the purpose of that is you don't want to, we, I shouldn't say you. We did not want a retake policy that promoted not trying in the first place. So obviously, if you try in the first place and you do well, you don't necessarily, you wouldn't have the, sorry, if you never tried to begin with, you would not necessarily, you would maybe always ask for a retake, which would be abusing the whole system. And so the idea is that you can only earn up to a certain grade the second time, that a lot of students would want a higher grade than that potentially. And so they would try harder the first time and not necessarily use the retake policy just to get a higher grade. Because it's not gonna give you a higher grade, it gives you another chance to learn.
The student has to show some initiative.
Correct.
And then who makes the determination of a retest? Is that the teacher?
Yeah, if the student shows initiative, they get to retest.
The teacher makes that decision.
Correct. So that's all.
And you only get to do it once. You only, you only get.
At the high school, yes.
Retake once.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so the next part, I just wrote it down by each level and what needs to happen next to continue this work. So again, Mr. Varney and I spent a lot of time with our PBL committee at the end of next year just doing exactly what Steve just had me do, which is question the current policy. It actually used to be last year, retakes could get you up to a 70 and we wanted, we changed it to a 75. So this idea of constantly seeing all this as a work in progress to make sure that it's really good for teachers and students is the way we're still approaching it, even though the law has no longer required that we do so. Because we want to make sure that the system is exactly how we want it, so it's fair. I met with Mr. Varney last week and we took a first way but revising the graduation policy. I did not bring it for you today because it needs to go through Julie Kenny and also the guidance department at the high school. So what we're, what we, what it does look like though is reverting back to the old one, but including a lot of the language of the new methodology. So we'll talk about multiple pathways, so students can still take an online course or do dual enrollment or other things to help get their credits. They don't just have to do things in one way, essentially. We also want to make sure that students are getting credit for their vocational classes. As they were in the new policy, they were getting science credit, so we're working on that. So we're really trying to take the best parts of both and put them together into a new one. And teachers will continue the work of improving their assessments and their curriculum. So any questions at the high school level?
Just another question. We added, we added a position, I think, didn't we, to assist those students who were trying to achieve proficiency? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't remember how JP described.
The study hall, yes.
And then we're continuing that.
Yeah, teachers, it's called guided production. And so essentially, that person that was hired allows teachers to be free. They all have different amounts of guided productions they do, but it's essentially a study hall with an academic support person. So they would help you look up what work you're missing and they would also help teach you, you know, maybe a piece that you were missing to make sure that you really understood what you were making up. Yeah, so that's built into the system. Okay, the middle school level, the second piece of paper that you have is a letter. And those Mr. Libby and Mr. Ward sent this letter home already to families at the end of August. So I talked about last year how the middle school had the biggest, was the biggest growth area. They had done the least amount of work on PBL until last year. And so we finished a lot of our curriculum work, we revamped our whole grading system and now we're completely in line K to eight and so we're caught up with that. If you would like to read into more detail about that grading system, it's all explained in the letter right there. And basically, moving away from having the zero to 100 scale, but having four levels of, four levels that the students would basically earn depending on how much they know. So very proficiency-based language. And we did put money in the budget this year for continued proficiency work and the middle school teachers will be the ones primarily using it to get subs to continue creating all of their assessments and updating their curriculum to align to this. So questions on the middle school? Okay. And the elementary level, they've been done with this for a very long time. The only piece that they will be doing this year that really doesn't change their practice, it just changes the wording, is you can see under the column that says wording. This is just a screenshot of a document that they can have. Can you excited that? Our grades will now be exceeding, attaining, developing, beginning, and refusing. That's what people will see on report cards. The only change is that you can see on the right-hand side, it used to be exceeds, means, partially means, and does not mean. The change for the wording were some things related to what infinite campus can and cannot do. I also really like parallel structure, so they all have ING. And we really threw around the idea of the wording does not mean, which is very negatively framed versus beginning means you just haven't learned it yet. And so that was one of the main changes that we wanted to make. But the elementary folks are doing the work that they've been doing for years still and nothing else is really changing like that. Okay, one of the things, yes?
Just, on the letter that was sent home, you're still issuing numeric grades classes.
At the high school.
So when you say that you're separating in the third or fourth paragraph of this letter, by separating habits of work from academic scores, raising the level of experience?
Sure, so students would get, let's say in math, they were working on four different academic standards. So something to do with fractions, something to do with decimals and so on and so forth. They would get an academic score, so they might get an exceeding, beginning, and developing on those standards. Those are academic. They would get separate scores for habits of work. Does the student participate in class? Do they come prepared? So those are all the things that make you sort of an active, a softer skills. An active participant, someone who's ready for learning, someone who's respectful to their peers. And so teachers grade on both of those things.
When does the first report card go out?
Yeah, it was, it was called, it was like behavior grades versus, you know, effort, behavior, exactly, is sort of the old fashioned way, yeah, that we all got graded on.
When does your report card go out?
These, they have trimesters of the younger grades and then at the older grades at the high school, they have semesters now, but they'll have quarterly reports. So it's anywhere between, you know, four and three times a year. In terms of how this is all being communicated, obviously a lot of it already has been. This vision that you've read will be posted on the website as soon as I know that I have your agreement that this is the way that the district should go, along with a letter from me explaining it. We will also send that home to all families, along with whenever their next school newsletter comes out, so it will be attached, the paper version in case people don't look at the website. Middle school families already received this letter and all families in K to eight. There's not much explaining at the K to five level because not much is changing about wording. And so I'll send a letter home with their first report card, making sure that that, as well as the how to read the report card guide is updated with the new language. And that's really all I had. So questions or other comments?
Is there a way to test apparent reaction to this before? The material, I guess, I'm concerned about the materials that are gonna be used to describe this to the parents.
I think the nice, the nice thing about this is that we're not actually doing, so if the law hadn't changed, there would be nothing new we needed to explain. The only thing that's really new that there might be a reaction to is the fact that the two, last two components of the required law, which is changing the transcript and changing the diploma, are two things we hadn't done yet, which we don't actually agree with and won't do. So all the news that's really been shared that would be different has already been shared. That middle school letter went out, that would be the biggest change from last year. And we've heard positive things from it so far. Yeah. So I don't know if that answers your question, but.
I think as a parent, like both if your kid's gone to school, the RSH system, that they're used to that screening, you know.
That's a very good point. It's not, it's not anything, you know.
It's new to bring it up to the middle school, but.
Right, right.
Yeah, so like for students who are entering sixth grade, they're really not going to be.
They probably have no idea if they hadn't read the letter themselves. Yeah, because that's the point, that it should just be continuous and should build from the upper grades.
One I'd like to say, I'm really glad we decided on this course. I think it was wonderful work that we've done so far. I'm glad that we're not abandoning the work that was done. And I think that regardless of the law, I think it was more importantly something our communities and our teachers, we all believed in this, that this would improve the education for our students. I'm glad that's the criteria we chose to use, not necessarily just was a legal requirement. And I guess too, I would say that from a, a younger school perspective, is now going to break three of the older classes. I think that the proficiency-based grading also speaks to the fact that we'll have more than one opportunity to learn from something. If you have something that's just an introductory skill or some skill that's just maybe the second time they see it at a developing level, I think it speaks to the fact that we are, are no longer trying to say, if you don't get this now, you'll never get it again. But we'll continue to build on skills and they'll have a way to appropriately be, have students experience something and learn it and then get to a very higher level being able to understand and use it. So I, I like that it also speaks at how many opportunities students will get and how we link those opportunities.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I mean, we have documents now that we didn't have before the required law that actually show, for instance, I'm thinking of the middle school science people that might take one standard and say, they now track it. So you're gonna do it in the fraud unit in sixth grade, in seventh grade you'll do it in this unit, in eighth grade you'll do it in this unit. These are all the assessments. They have live links, so no matter who the teacher is, they can get the curriculum. And it's just a much more organized and detailed oriented system, which in the end is better for the students. So I think all of what you're saying is true, is none of the good work will be wasted. And whether you agree with the initial requirements or not, I think the bottom line is it made us be better teachers, which is great.
Just back on your initial sheet.
Yes.
One of the bullets refers to that the teaching and learning approach will adapt to all the unique learners and their individualized program. Could you explain what you meant by that?
Yes. So the words that I didn't use because they're too education-y in that sentence is a student with an IEP or a 504 or a specialized RTI learning plan. And so essentially, that one bullet point is referring to students who might have a different structure to have their learning or different requirements. Because the old law does specifically say when students who might have an IEP can and can't have a diploma essentially, or the different kinds of diplomas those students can have. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was highlighted that we're going to help all kids get towards graduation under the same type of diploma essentially. Does that make sense? Okay.
And just, my final question, I guess, goes back to, I mean, what we heard, read, a lot of concern parental concern, maybe concern from professionals, was focused on the diploma.
Yeah.
And the change in the grading system. And your statement here sort of gives credence to that concern. Does this conclude ever moving to a different grading system or?
I feel like where we landed is people tend, are pretty happy for the most part. Those on either end of the, you know, very much in support of all things PBL, very traditional. And so I would say it would take a lot to make huge grading changes from here on out, especially at the high school level. I think people are very wed to how the zero to 100 scale, the diploma is and how that translates to opportunities outside of the district. And so I would be shocked, to be honest, I would be shocked if we changed it. And I don't, right now, I think we're happy with how things are.
Have you been talking to your peers across the state? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
What other districts?
Actually, during our administrative retreat, the woman, G. Enright, who works with us, was working with a lot of other districts on this. And I asked her that question, curious about what others are doing. And she said, basically to a district, they're all doing exactly what we're doing. Is taking the parts of, that are the good work that they believe in and kind of moving on from the pieces that they didn't agree with.
Thank you for persevering through this. How long has this been? Four or five years?
Yes, this is, this is year, actually year six.
Year seven.
Yeah, at least year six.
So any additional questions for Katie at this point? I think, I think how we communicate this to the parents and the school, community generally, is going to be important. So, you know, hopefully, not only letters and. So, you know, hopefully, not only letters and your communication strategy seems to cover two or three different ways of trying to reach parents on this issue, but I hope we go the extra mile to be sure that the information on this is out, presumably we have websites.
Yes.
As well, I think that'll be critical.
Absolutely. I was worried, though, that's why I also want to send the paper copy out, at least not everybody goes to the website, so everyone will be.
No, no, I think I'm hoping, you know, trying to hit several different outlets for the simulation would be important.
Right, right.
I think I also ask, I guess you asked Raspberry, that whether the board needs to act accordingly, or is it just part of it?
I don't know that we need a motion tonight, we're going to do a graduation policies, and those will come before you in the next couple months. That's probably our most formal way of moving forward.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
We're still working on refining our graduation policy, so it'll come here.
I'll have something for you next time, something about that.
Are folks comfortable with the direction?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for the hard work. I agree with Jennifer, I think it's important that, well, actually, I don't know how much stake on the actual intent of this, I think, one of the problems was the funding this effort. We certainly spent a lot of our resources on professional, not in cash, but time, and just glad to hear that effort.
But none of it was wasted. It was wasted. It was something that I wanted to think about.
Okay, very good. Next, Katie. 11.2, we vote we don't give to the NCA, for that school, the Annual Assembly?
Yeah, Main School Board Association. And really, what that is, is to give RSU one a voice at the table up in Augusta, October 45th, 26th, at the City Council. So, I don't know if you simply watched the comments or.
Everybody interested, how many intend to discover? I think we can send, we don't want to have one official available?
I think it's one official, but there are many people that want to go to RSU.
Not that Allen hasn't served as a labor leader in the Nelson first year, or is going to be the supervisor, or even attending as an observer. If not, I'm going to ask Allen if he's willing to do it again. Okay, we don't need a motion for this. Yeah, it's a little, well, my Allen to represent RSU one. 11.3, we need to approve the agreement for services between RSU one and Midcoast PBL. This isn't action either, I guess we've worked with this particular position and this particular group for quite a period of time. So do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
No, no, no. Second.
Do I have a motion by Jennifer, second by Megan, in discussion? In favor, can you oppose? 11.4, personnel, I think, to the table?
Yeah, we have a nomination for you, Emily Markowski, I believe her mom was to be a school board member seventy years ago. And so she is our nomination for three days a week, physical education teacher at Knight Global. You can see her education and experience for it.
Katie, you have a motion to approve, a motion by Jennifer, second by Megan. I just have a question, was this position was unfair, or was?
It's complicated, it's a transfer within the district where someone decided that they could work a little bit less time at a couple of our other schools, and so they have worked open up this three-day-a-week at Knight Global.
It's a no add-in?
No, it's not an additional position.
For question, it's not an additional?
Not at all.
I happen to, I don't know Emily personally, and I know her in the context of her work at law, except she's very enthusiastic about this. So we have a motion and a second, in favor, can you oppose? 12.0, public comments again. Draining the public out of the room. 13.0, sex, sex, the end of the year. The board meeting is standing for October 29th, this is for school at six o'clock. Do you open the door for us?
Absolutely.
All right.
Go out to the red carpet.
Somebody open the red carpet?
Sure you do.
I appreciate the board meeting at five o'clock tonight on the polls, we'll have those for action at the next, at the 29th minute. And it was a good discussion on the polls, the board, the board's been a job, and we would like everyone's concern with this issue to be discussed. Okay, do I have a motion to withdraw? Second by Megan, in favor, can you oppose? Thank you very much.